First thing we'll do is stand for pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, first item is public comment. Anybody here for public comment? Tom, please take your name for the record.
Tom Doherty, President of the Rainy Lake Property Owners Association. And the purpose of my visit here today is we received a grant of $5,000 from the Economic Development Agency within the county. And part of that requirement was to come back and give you guys an update on the progress that has been made in the rule curve review process being done by the IJC. And I believe you should have in your packet just a three-page summary. I don't know if you're aware, but the draft is now out for review until June 1st. As far as the Rainy Lake Property Owners Association is, we are very pleased with the draft. We are asking that the draft be implemented in its entirety, the way it's written. There's some very good benefits, not only to the users of Rainy Lake and the residents that live on Rainy Lake, but to the ecology as well. And when you look at the rule curve itself in the packet, you know, you might look at it and see it, you know, be a little alarmed at the alternative that they're proposing. And they actually hold the water levels up throughout the winter.
Excuse me, just a minute. This is under informational, so it's at the end of your board packet?
No, okay.
And it's under G, what is it?
G5.
Yeah, G5. Excuse me, sorry, Tom. I just want everyone to board to make sure they're all...
Sure. And you know, when I first looked at that curve, I was a little bit alarmed. I thought it created the opportunity for more flood risk in the spring. In talking with the hydrologists that are involved on the technical working side of the rule curve review process, that that risk isn't present there because it's early before we would have our thaws and before any runoff would be entering the system. And it gives the opportunity for the dam keepers to go down to the bottom of the rule curve if need be. There's also a mechanism in there that if we had a very wet winter with a lot of snow, a lot of rain in the fall, and a very wet spring was forecasted, they'd take a long hard look at it in March and involve local input, and then they would make a flood call and they'd run the lake down a little bit more, which would ultimately wouldn't prevent a flood like we had 2014 or 2002, but it might take the edge off it a little bit.
Would help, exactly.
They feel very strongly that the new management techniques that will be involved will eliminate the nuisance floods that we had in Rainy Lake since they changed the rule curve in 2000. We had numerous events where water was up over the top of docks. When that happens, people immediately pull their boats out, the traffic ceases on the lakes, it hurts resorts, it hurts everybody. We have shoreline erosion, pollution issues, a number of different things.
Still seeing the damage from that flood on the shoreline.
Absolutely, absolutely. So we're very pleased with the recommendations that they have contained within the draft as well. They're looking, they're proposing the rule curve alternative C, the rule curve itself, as I explained. The ecological benefits lie in the tail end of it. If you look at it in September, there's a more drastic drawdown of Rainy Lake. And the reason for that is, believe it or not, muskrats are very important to the ecology of the lake and the overall health. It's what's happened in the past, and we've seen, I was talking to Mr. McCarthy about this, there's not any muskrats around anymore. And the muskrats help eat the cattails, the hybrid cattails that are there. They'll create channels through the cattails, it'd be better for fish spawning. It just creates more opportunity for the proper aquatic vegetation to grow in a native weather.
I just want to say that there's at least two because they've been living in my dock for the last five years. Muskrat love.
Right. And it's what happens with that drawdown is it gives, muskrats are smart enough, they know that they need to rebuild their hut. So as they draw it down, and you get into November before the lakes freeze up, they rebuild their huts, and then the lake will not have a huge drawdown, it'll be a wider band, and there won't be a real significant drawdown through the harsh winter months. So then they should survive it. And from the onset of this process, there was fellow John Moran who was adamant that we needed to try and do something there. And he had all these crazy ideas, and some of them would have created a lot of flood risk. And ultimately, we all settled with this. So the other draft recommendations are the promote more flexible operations for the dam keepers. Before, they were tied to being stuck within the rule curve. And they'll be able to operate within, you know, they were stuck in it, but they had to hit a line right in the middle. Now, they most likely will be able to operate within that band at their own discretion. There'll be a water levels committee that will actually have a terms of reference defined within that. They never really had any clear definitions before. They'll empower the water levels committee to direct targets outside of the rule curve range. Now, before, they had to go to the IJC, it would take a number of days to get a decision made, sometimes as many as four or five days, and we're already seeing the lake go completely out of control. And there again, the dam keepers' hands were tied, didn't do anything. They're going to examine the practical operational approaches to benefit Rainy River interests while meeting the rule curve requirements. That's what they're talking about there, is they want to try and get away from these big deluges of water all at once when all the gates come open, and then it creates, you know, harmful downstream effects as well. So they're going to address that more. They're going to take a long, hard look at adaptive rule curve management, which is an important part of the process. So going forward, we'd like to see the county, and I should add that bar engineering is currently reviewing the whole document. That's what we did with the funding that we got from the county. We used $5,000, not $5,000, and then $7,000 of our own to have them analyze this draft recommendation. And then we'll be formulating our comments based on that. And I'll just, I'll close with Tony Nagurski, who's one of our board members. Once he read the document and slept on it, he said we hit a base and wrote a homerun. Virtually got almost everything that we were looking for as an organization, you know, that's important to the taxpayers that live on Rainy Lake and also the ecological considerations that are involved. All right?
The quicker response is critical because that was one of the reasons we had, that wouldn't have been as severe had people been able to...
Right. Tom, is there, once, are these recommendations open for public comment one more time? You know, I'm saying, I know it's been an incredibly detailed, long process, but I don't know how close to the end you really are.
Well, they're hoping to have, I should have brought the timeline with, and that's something I can forward to folks. We will have a couple more workshops with them and talking about the comments that have been submitted. They've been pushing us to give them our comments right now, but we're not ready to do that because the advising engineer hasn't completed the review of the document. We had hoped to have it today, but we don't want them to miss something that could be detrimental.
The last one, I was out, the only negative part is one of the scientists were concerned about, it was harmful to walleyes, but everything else looked pretty good, so it's going to be getting closer to our agreement.
And it's what that is, is where they, it reduces the walleye spawning success by 1%, is what it is. And that's only if you make that flood call and it doesn't happen, if the flood doesn't happen. So if we don't make that flood call, it's not a factor. So that's where that's at in there. And it was an interesting process, and we found from the association standpoint is we commented immediately after we had the decision-making workshop, we formulated comments and gave them to them immediately because we figured out their pattern where the study board and the technical working group was meeting like four or five days after that. So we got our feedback to them immediately, they put it into, you could see it right in the document, it was fun to watch it evolve. Any other questions?
Appreciate the input.
Thank you. And I have a copy of the, you don't need to read the whole document, it's, they talk about all the studies and things. I flagged a couple of the deals here, but here's the executive summary, basically sums it all up, possibly has formulated something out of that. And I'll send some other information to Jenny as we get our comments ready.
Great, Tom. Thanks for all your tough time working on this, Tom.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
We got $2 million in legacy, it looks like. Tom? For that waste water project. The whole part of this agreement that happened.
All right. Sounds good.
Yeah. I move on the agenda with additions, Mr. Chair. And I've got another one, other than what Jenny put out here, we need a chair appointment at the VCB, joint powers board as an alternate, because Brian can't be there that day.
Okay. And adding the agendas or the additions that...
Yep, the Jenny presented.
Jenny had listed here. Okay, I've got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McBride. Any discussion, Mr. Chair?
Given that we're on time here, just for Northland County State and for Father Ben, I know he has a funeral at 11 o'clock, could we move 8:12 up to the start of county business?
Sure.
I know Father Ben would appreciate that.
Okay. Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing that all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Approve minutes, May 9th, regular meeting. Got a motion by Commissioner Nordby.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Skoye. Discussion, hearing that all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Personnel business, notice of summer temp hires in the highway department. Uh, it's a notice higher, so no motion, just noticing those. Okay, just going, okay. Financial business, review claims, auditor, highway, and health and human service claims.
Are we going to go to Northland?
On what?
Are we going to go to Northland?
Oh, when did you want that to?
Move it up, move it up to, let's do pay the bills and then that.
Pay the bills, okay, that's what I, that's what I was thinking of, so. Auditor, highway, and health and human service claims, and then there's one burial.
Mr. Chairman, I vote to approve the plea.
Motion by Commissioner Nordby.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pavlik to either claims, pay the bills. Any further discussion? Hearing that all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. And we're going to go to Northland County State, is that okay?
Well, I had public comment, but that's okay.
Yeah.
You had to put the...
Okay.
You did have public comment.
You're still, you're still...
Look at what we've been doing.
Sorry about that.
It's okay. Anyway.
Father, you want to come on up too?
That's okay.
Go ahead.
Good morning, and again, thank you, Board. I think this is the third or fourth trip I've been able to make here. Beautiful, foggy morning.
We're always happy to see you.
Yes, thank you. I'm Greg Walker with Northland County State Center, the CEO. And we're here to discuss the county's support in moving the Little Fork Facility of Chemical Dependency, I knew, to High Falls.
Commissioner, do you have...
Well, again, for the record, I'm representing, or I'm not, I sit on both boards, so I have to, I guess I'm representing both sides or acting as an intermediary, if you will, here. But I think, Mr. Walker, has made, you know, and Northland have made a huge effort here to try to continue care. But to that point, if I could, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to put this out, I was telling Jenny, and, you know, I've been on the corrections board in Duluth here, regional corrections for the past quarter of a century. We got our statistics for all the counties that are in ARC. I brought home Koochichins, and I would like you to pass these around, and I just want to show you what we are actually dealing with here when it comes to treatment and, you know, how much it's needed here. Greg and Father Ben.
What did you go on to, Jim?
There you go, Jim. Thank you. I've got a couple more here too, if anyone's interested, just briefly, because I didn't want to relay the point. But if you take a look down at our statistics, and I've got them for all the counties here, if you look at, if you look at drugs, 83, and we're talking, this is a report date, January through March, these are, this is probation, how many people we have on probation, treatment, you name it, I mean, this shows you the scope of the problem we're facing. You look at drugs, 83, the highest on the entire list of all, all the charged offenses. Add to that the burglary, 22 there, and theft, 19, which go hand in hand, as law enforcement will tell you, with the drug problem we have. And the alcohol DWI, 19. Add that all up, and it is a huge percentage of our probation and jail population. I've been on there for 25 years, I can tell you, it didn't look like this even 15 years ago. It has changed dramatically. And this is why, you know, the county, no matter what the board decides here today, we need a, we need a treatment facility here in Koochichin County, it is greatly needed. It's just ironic that they passed these out Friday, it hit home for me, and I thought it would for you. So to that end, Mr. Chairman, the deal that's on the table, and Jenny had it outlined here too, I just froze.
To Northland County to your grant for new facility in international calls.
Right. Koochichin County would be essentially contributing $96,000 over a period of months. Jenny's been good enough to try to work this so that we could do half now and then half of next year's budget to get this rolling. You know, other than that, one of the issues is, you know, follow-up, et cetera. The value to Koochichin County, I think I can say without reservation, is transportation. Take a look at those numbers. We'd be transporting, and it's at least 300, minimum transport's $300, $350. And when they're longer range, it's overnight, it can go to five or six. Add that up over the course of the years, and at the end of the day, we're going to get that money back, is how Northland looks at it, and certainly I would too. Without help from the county, this is not going to go, it's ends. So what, Northland is, you know, representing both sides. When it comes to reporting or things like that, how's it, how's it doing? That's why you have a representative from the county board that sits on Northland, and that's, there's the communications section that goes back and forth, so I think that kind of covers that issue. So the real question from county board is, are we willing to contribute that money over the period of these two budgets and get this thing going? But, you know, and I'll let Greg speak for himself and Jenny do some...
I just think to, if I can do this correctly, I'm going to place a motion on the table to grant the two-year grant to Northland County to purchase, help them purchase the property from St. Thomas Parish. It's a facility that we have outwored, we think it's very viable, a very nice setting, and I think it's going to be successful. So I would, I said, for the board as a motion.
Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner McBride to approve that.
I certainly agree with everything that's been said, so I second the motion.
Okay, second by Commissioner Nordby. You know, I've seen the facility myself, the one that we're talking about, and I've seen the facility at Little Fork, the one that's presently being used. You know, last year, we had a record amount of miles that we, the county paid for, you know, for transporting folks to different facilities. You know, and seeing these numbers that Commissioner Pavlik presented, now, you know, we're only, it's only increasing, which county taxpayers are paying for. We might as well put that money to good use and add a local facility. You know, we won't have to be paying people to take them, you know, to Duluth or further. You know, there are some people that we pay for to transport, you know, to St. Peter Reuben, and, you know, it's cost the taxpayers tons of money. So, anyhow, further discussion?
If anyone can do this, it's Northland and Greg Walker. We've got a long track recorded there, so I think we can all be comfortable. Mr. Chairman?
Just one last thing, I know each one of the commissioners is really taking this to heart, it's difficult to mid-budget come up with this money, but I think it's an opportunity that we have to do, and I mean, I'd first like to thank, thank St. Thomas for, they've given us a discount price on it. I know that they feel too, that, Father Ben, that it's going to do well for this community. So I'd like to thank them too for being a partner in this.
If this passes today, it will allow everyone to move on, because Father Ben, he's going to be homeless here. You've got to take care of him.
It's fine. Any further discussion? Hearing that all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion is carried.
And I am staying for the record.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board, thank you very much, and we will do our best to make it work.
Exciting.
Thank you for both of you.
Wish you wouldn't have driven all the way for this, but I think it was exciting, goes for you, for the free folks, and for us.
Definitely. Yeah, it's worth it, thank you guys, thank you guys as well, thank you for all your work.
Thanks, guys.
Say say for Jack, his family today for us.
Of course. I'll see you guys later. Renew life and voluntary optional life, voluntary dental, and long-term disability and short-term disability plans, and change voluntary vision plan.
A lot of words here, Commissioner, but no, move on then.
Got a motion by Commissioner McBride, second by Commissioner Skoye. Any discussion?
It's one of those, trust me.
Yeah. Hearing that all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Revised county temporary hire policy.
Was that deleted, Jim?
Uh, yes, it was, because, so that was my fault. And you know what else we missed? I think we were going to do Candace's...
Military leave.
Military leave under, right after, that's, right after the notice of tire, but so we could slip that in.
We'll go back to Candace.
All right.
Candace, you want to come on up?
Good morning, Board.
Good morning. And notice a two-day military leave of absence on 5/24 and 5/25 for Karissa McLean, per county leave of absence policy for military purposes.
Correct. She's going to Grand Forks tomorrow and Thursday. She is still in the reserves.
Okay.
Only a little over a year left, she can retire, so just, we just need to support her until she can get this last year done.
Okay, Mr. Board.
You know, as part of the policy, I think it's notification, I don't think it needs a board action.
It doesn't need a board action because it's by statute that we have to provide that, but we noticed that there is a leave order.
Do you want a motion?
We don't need a motion.
Just letting you know that she's going to be gone, and I will be closing at lunchtime because I'm there by myself, so.
And I know you're busy.
Understood.
All right. Well, you tell her, have a good trip, and we appreciate her service.
Thank you for your service.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Candace.
Are we, are we figuring out where we're at?
Of course, we're all on work.
Prove, yeah, on number 11, right?
Yes.
Who's that guy in the blue shirt out there? That's familiar.
Prove June 13th, 2017, public hearing to receive public comment on proposed business subsidy policy and criteria. Oof. And motion by Commissioner Pavlik. Second by Commissioner Nordby. Discussion, hearing that all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion is carried. And comprehensive trail plan funding request presented by ARDC. Andy, good morning.
Great going, Andy, and give moral support to somebody else. Well, I give them a hard time at least once a month.
I see Wade more than I see my wife.
I might add, Andy does a fabulous job, and has for many years, for Arrowhead Regional Development Commission.
Thank you for inviting me here today to talk about the comprehensive trails plan. It's a story that Pete can probably tell better than I, but the Northern St. Louis County Trails Task Force has been meeting for quite a while.
One more time.
Sure.
Thank you.
That group is looking at all types of trails in Northern St. Louis County, which is very undefined as to what that geography is, but in this case, we're talking about anything other than Duluth. This group has been meeting for some time, and they asked ARDC to scope out a comprehensive trails plan for the entire county except for Duluth. But in attendance at those meetings was one, Pete Schultz, representing this area, in really connecting the entire area surrounding the national park, as it is dominant in Northern St. Louis County and Northeast Koochichin County. It did not seem to make sense to do planning for one part of the area surrounding the park and not all of the area surrounding the park, and at Pete's suggestion, we did add Northeast Koochichin County to the scope of work. This has been bumped down the road a ways as we've worked to secure funding. I'm excited to say that we've gotten commitments from the IRRB and Explore Minnesota to get the bulk of the funding in place, and we will be getting funding from St. Louis County, we're still working out exactly how that's going to work. They have a couple other projects they want us to work on at the same time. So this process essentially gets everybody together involving all types of trails, motorized, non-motorized, what have you, and gets them talking together about what their priorities are for the area's trails. And these processes have been done in Lake and Cook County, and they've been very well received by funding agencies because they know that everybody's on board with everybody else. They don't have competing trail corridors, that type of thing, that it's been vetted, it's been worked out. The county boards have seen this information and agreed with it, and they know that funding requests have the standing behind them that they need from the local folks. The funding requests that have been successful come from many different sources, including Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails Commission. The process is very simple, even though it's expensive and time-consuming, it is figure out what we have today, figure out what we want tomorrow, and figure out how to get it done. And get everybody together, talking about that, and moving it forward.
And how to pay for it.
And how to pay for it, that's right. We are asking for a small amount from Koochichin County, $4,000 over $62,000 process. It kind of occurred to me today, and it's always hard to follow the people in the clergy when they ask for it. But it did occur to me today that this process is likely going to bleed into next year, and if the county wanted to fund it on next year's budget, that would certainly be acceptable. And I would say at that time, we would be further along enough in this process that we would actually be looking at working on the remainder of Koochichin County and adding those trails into a planning process, and we would be seeking grant funding to do that. Because this has been delayed getting the other funds, I think that opportunity has presented itself. And that's what we're talking about.
So Andy, you're asking, requesting a $4,000, just a one-time payment.
However you want to pay for it, it's up to you.
I mean, total of $4,000.
Total of $4,000 out of a $62,000 process, yes.
And you're saying we could move that to 18 budget?
Yeah.
And long range is to include the rest of Kooch?
That would be my intent, is to finish off the rest of the county in 2018.
Commissioner? I don't know if anyone happened to read the... Commissioner, I don't know if anyone happened to read this, I think it was in the Sunday paper this, this weekend, uh, that they had a, they had a display or a map of the trail from Minneapolis all the way up the North Shore to Grand Marais, that ARDC and Andy have been instrumental in doing. And these things get used, that North Shore trail that we put in over the years, and we go up and see it, we get the statistics, it's amazing how, how, how much they are used, and a lot of it by people from all over the area who come up here, so. I beat up, wanna thank you for kinda getting on this, and certainly Andy, I mean, couldn't do without Andy, but all's I can say is for that, for that amount of money, the return is huge.
That's the bike trail you were just talking about.
Yep. Did you see that in the Sunday paper? I think it was the Sunday paper.
Yeah, they're doing a, a ride. They designated all the way from St. Paul to Grand Portage as a national bike route.
Yep.
And, uh, ARDC's been working literally forever. Um, the Gitchigami Trail, the most, most expensive bike trail, and getting that completed. It was the only trail in the bonding bill that didn't get passed. And it was the only trail in the bonding bill last year that didn't get passed, so it's, it's created a couple of days.
And it would be the most popular, right? I mean, people would be...
We're gonna conduct an economic impact study on the trail, both that, the Gitchigami Trail, the Lake Walk, and the Munger Trail this summer. It'll include counting number of users and interviewing folks, that's how much money they spend. The Masabi Trail did a smaller study, uh, recently, and I think that if somebody was traveling for more than 50 miles to use the trails, and it was well over $100 that they were spending in the community on average, uh, when they used those trails. Certainly impactful. I think Pete's interest has been this, as this process has moved forward, has been working with ATV clubs in expanding trail systems for ATVs, or even just route systems using roads. And I happen to be talking to a reserve owner on Rainy Lake, uh, recently, and they were very interested in ATV trails and in connecting folks in this part of the world to existing ATV systems. And the ATV club in, in Quad Cities, in, around Virginia there, I think it started in December?
Yeah.
And they have over 500 members signed up already. It's certainly a burgeoning market, and we know, we've had shorter winters on both ends lately, maybe not appear as much as for a little bit further south. Uh, but ATVs, that season keeps getting longer, and the snow season seems to be getting shorter.
And bike ATV walking, it doesn't matter, that's what people wanna do nowadays, and that's, that's why I think this makes sense.
I'd add that I got involved primarily because of the ATVs, and it was to work with the Vermillion Club to extend some kind of connection to all the gateway communities. But since learning about Lake and Cook County identifying the need for, uh, mountain biking trails and hiking trails, bird watching trails, kiosks for information, uh, all of that is a wonderful thing for tourism. We have the, uh, we have the, uh, country for it, we don't have the infrastructure in place. And this would be a step in the right direction to identify all of the gap to work with.
And I will say too, in Lake and Cook County, it was surprising that, that much of the discussion, and more of the recommendations centered on policy and things that are fairly cheap and, and can have cost savings, like shared maintenance, shared purchasing of equipment, things like that, uh, shared parking lots, um, centering those things to save money, and that, in Cook County in particular, they focus way more on that than they did actual trail expansion. It was try to save money with the existing trails and make them better through policy. So that was really interesting. And the Forest Service, you know, owns darn near 90% of, uh, Cook County, I guess we shouldn't say the Forest Service owns it, the American people own it. Uh, and they were fully involved and fully integrated into the planning process. We had some headbutting, as one might expect, but it actually went really well, and in, in Lake County in particular, the Forest Service was implementing ATV route recommendations before the plan was even published. And it worked out really well, so. There is some hope for working with the Feds, I guess.
Not much.
Commissioner McBride, did you have something?
Well, Commissioner Pavlik kinda mentioned something, just reading here a little bit, Andy, you know, said the plan addressed, uh, obvious opportunities, you know, the hiking, biking, ATVs, snowing, but also some non-traditional, like canoeing, kayaking, winter cycling, and those type of things, and not just trails, but routes.
Correct.
Lake routes and stuff that people can use, portages and such, so, it's pretty encompassing.
Kind of a whole different way of looking at this, is what we're doing. Whole other ski club comes to Lake, I mean, I've been trying to get that little trail...
I imagine ski tra, uh, ski trails are a little...
Yep. We'll work with everybody.
And excited to want to get the whole county, 'cause I know the southwest part is, is that there are a lot of people down there that like to recreate outdoors and...
They, they have a system of trails down there for ATVs that does extend into Atasca County, but you can do some frequent bombing around. In fact, I was down there a couple weeks ago, and I came back wearing enough Atasca County, and they sent me a property tax bill.
Well, it's a big one, then, because their taxes are higher.
Speaking of the southwest part of the county, we were contacted by folks from Northhome. Uh, they just recently completed their comprehensive plan, and, uh, they talked to us about increasing, uh, the presence of the Avenue of Pine scenic byway, which is designated through Atasca County up to Northhome, and wanting to, uh, promote that more and then figure out where, how to improve that area. So we'll be holding a community meeting sometime after July 1st for all the communities in Atasca County and Koochichin County along that byway, so, you can look forward to that.
Just a question, Pete, has there ever been any conversation, I remember years ago, uh, you know, as the Rainy Lake system, and a portage way around the dam?
There's been a discussion about that. In fact, we've advised people on how exactly to go about, uh, doing that, and you can portage around the dam, but you might be walking through city streets and so on, and the safe way, of course, is to take out above Rainier Rapids. If you feel like you can go through the Rainier Rapids, you can take out the path road, and just go back in, uh, below the dam. And, uh, yeah, we have had people that are in Lake and Cook, probably following the routes of the way, sure.
So they, they portage right through town? Yeah, that's, that's great.
And some of them, we've offered to go and help them, uh, like with a trailer, and know they're doing this the traditional way, they wanna have portage, they're gonna do so. Why stick it over their head? The way they go. Walking down Third Street.
There, there also was a preliminary effort anyway to open up that navigation, so people could use the waterway.
That lock, that lock system.
Yeah, it goes, yeah. But anyway, I'm, since I'm also chairman of ARDC, I've gotta get a plug in here for the development commission and planning, which, you know, we also do aging, and, uh, we're involved with the highway systems for the metropolitan and interstate council, but planning is our biggest and main mission, and there is not a community in Koochichin County that Andy hasn't done projects in.
Yeah.
We do a lot of it quietly, and, uh, that doesn't get a lot of big uproar. Rainier, maybe they're a little more, you know...
Energetic.
Yeah, exactly. But, uh, you know, it's greatly appreciated, and, you know, without ARDC, these types of things wouldn't occur, so. Thank you, Andy, for the half of the board.
What wishes of the board?
Well, I'll gladly move. If Jenny can find a way to fund it over...
I think we do it, we can, we can take it on the contingency in 17, or if Andy's fine with it in 18, we'll just, um, put it in the 18 budget.
That's fine for me.
Okay. Perfect.
Commissioner, uh, do you happen to have a conflict on this one?
No.
We certainly have not. As people have seen on these types of votes, I'm not exactly sure what the ruling is, but...
Okay.
I don't, I, there's no benefit for me either way.
Okay. So, Commissioner McBride?
Yes?
Was, was that insinuating that you were gonna make a motion?
I just wanted to be, protect my fellow commissioner here.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. I'll, I'll say, and I guess for, for, uh, conversation, discussion, I would just ask Jenny if it, you know, if it's done this year or next year, wherever, where we can fit it, but...
Yeah, we can put it in the, uh, 18 budget as well. I'll put it in my budget file, and when we create that budget, I'll make sure that that's included as part of the board motion.
That's for $4,000.
For $4,000.
Okay. Um, okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner McBride.
Nope.
I thought you did. Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner Pavlik.
You guys were all so quiet, I had to move.
Yeah. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Before Andy changes his mind, I'm...
I've got a motion by Commissioner McBride. You guys are tough on me this morning. So...
Train across, Pavlik?
Yeah. Uh, there's three of them on the way this morning when I come in, so two going south and one coming north. But, uh, anyhow, any, any further discussion on that?
Yeah, just one thing.
Uh-huh.
I'm glad this went to next year, because we're only how many months into this year? We're already over budget again, and I think we're gonna have to be mindful of watching our spending, your budget issues.
This was actually, the request was for next year, right?
That's what I'm saying, yes. And I, I would have a hard time supporting it if it was coming to the shores, so...
The guy behind you is probably looking for money too, so...
Not me.
Oh!
Any, uh, any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Well, that guy is...
We're being generous, gentlemen. Thank you, everybody. Glad I could come up today. Um, I missed you during our normal transportation discussion. I've been done earlier, so if there's anything at all you need assistance with, or questions about our work, uh, please contact me. We have a very good representation from Wade, and then Kevin is also on our mission, so appreciate that.
I just gave somebody your name. I can't remember what it was for, but, uh...
You gave it to the sheriff back there, right?
Sheriff.
Oh, wasn't it the sheriff you gave his name to?
No, 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 no. No, it was last week, I had a discussion with somebody that was planning something. I gave, gave Andy a call, you know?
Okay, I'll watch for it.
Are you heading back now?
Yeah. Well, I gotta stop in Evelyn to, actually, the Northern...
Trail Task Force meeting.
Trail Task Force meetings today, so that worked out well. I should report now, too. We are working on our detention study that we got funding from last year's legislature for. We have met with the sheriff here, and lots of discussions have been held, and we basically have said we don't need more jail space, we need more drug treatment facilities, mental health facilities.
I am glad you brought that up, because we had that whole conversation, it fit right into what we do.
It, uh, absolutely, I commend you for that, because that is what is needed.
Yeah. Thank you, Andy.
Thanks, Andy.
I forgot about that study.
Okay. Kathy, do you wanna come on out?
Good morning.
And, uh...
Do you dare? Pretty rowdy group.
Boy, Al, yeah.
Uh, got, uh, one addition that, uh, was added this morning, and that's to authorize board member attendance to the community picnic at Smoky Bear Park, uh, for Mental Health Month, has a board activity, and that's, uh, this Friday from 4:00 to 6:00 P.M.
I'll move on the, on the condition you guys don't get rowdy, and you represent the county board well, okay?
So we got a motion by Commissioner Pavlik.
Otherwise, Pete will be hosing you.
Second by Commissioner Norby. Any, any discussion?
I think it's Thursday.
It's Thursday.
Is it Thursday?
It's Thursday, not Friday. Yep.
Okay, okay, yeah.
So mental health, that mental health, I appreciate if you, I don't know if I can make it, but I would appreciate it somebody.
Okay, any, uh, any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried.
Here, there, just said that's at 4:00.
Yeah.
Thank you. Round is it at 4:00 or 5:00?
It says 4:00.
Just say 4:00.
Now, we're gonna kinda start gathering up, like 3 o'clock or something.
Right, to set up and stuff, yeah.
You're gonna go with that pressure on, good.
I probably won't do so. Appreciate it. Okay, uh, approve amendment to Minnesota DHS contract for local collaborative time study.
Yes, I did just recently bring this to the board for their approval, and since that time, DHS has, um, removed, uh, section of it, um, that they found was not necessary. So this is just that amendment removing the section 5.8.
Will they find it objectionable or what?
No, there was, um, the state statute already defines business as excluding political subdivisions, so it, it's just not, not necessary anymore.
Just clear.
Yeah, it's just extra, and it's already somewhere else.
Got a motion by Commissioner Pavlik. Second. Second by Commissioner Norby. Discussion. Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Motion carried. We already, uh, passed your burial payment.
Okay.
Uh, approved foster care licensing recommendations.
Yes, we have a relicensing, um, for daycare for 14 children, for family daycare, with Jeri Ann Grace and Addie Russo recommend relicensing for 12 children for family daycare.
Motion by Commissioner McBride. Second. Second by Commissioner Skoye. Discussion. Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Yep. That's it. Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Someone called me on something, and I referred them to you.
Yes, and I have talked to them, and I am actually doing some more, um, talking to other people and asking some questions and trying to get something figured out. It was about, uh, gas cards for...
Oh.
Some of the churches.
Yes.
Who wanted to do something.
Thank you. I told them I know nothing about it, but I said, I said, you would know who to...
Yeah. Well, actually, there isn't one, so we're trying, we're trying to get something going.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Yeah, I believe it.
You're up, Dale. Just give me a minute here.
I did mention we were possible to chair it, because I suppose, or, 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 I'm surprised you guys called Chairman Pavlik.
Yeah. Okay. It's on the track.
It's not gonna be good.
I just felt...
Because of benefits. Yeah.
I heard that, well, viewers were open to those last thing.
Yeah.
So there are these really areas that go up, looking at, we, or, right away, is trees, what's, and then something to help with any dispute.
Right, and see if there's any potential damage to the greenways. Well, the lines are gonna be, or water is gonna be on the land.
How we doing? I, I feel a lot better than last time I saw you.
Yeah.
How about you?
Yeah. Good to call.
I had to call you right away, I was pretty excited.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, approve Island View sewer report and compensation to the viewers.
All right, one of the requirements by state statute for, uh, moving forward with a project like this, is to, um, appoint a viewer committee, which we did a couple weeks ago, and it was, uh, Mr. Wagner, William Wagner, Cam Hardwick, and Jay Mitchell. We had gone out on March, or on May 11th, toured the whole project, had a SEH engineer We had an S E H engineer with us to point out where lines are, had the plans outlined and grinder stations and all works. Got that project done, so I put a little report together. I was hoping you guys would approve that and along with the, with the report, approve a payment for the viewers. Now, the amount of the payment was kind of suggested by, by one of our attorneys, $50 an hour, which comes with $350 apiece for our viewers, so I guess that's what I would recommend.
Got a motion by Commissioner Norby to approve. Have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pavlik. Discussion.
Had to have him.
Hearing that all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Did it go okay? Did you go with them?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
There's three of them, right?
Yep. There are a couple other just informational or help items. The Joint Powers Board, we set up a meeting for the 31st, or yeah, for the 31st.
For Wednesday?
For next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
And we need to cover...
I have a conflict with these coaches that day, so...
Right, and so...
That's your addition.
We did?
No, we did not.
Okay. All in favor of that last motion?
Oh, yes, you did pass that last motion. I thought you were talking about adding an activity about the joint powers.
We're in the, he needs another person to, I would move, you know, directing the chair to, or authorizing the chair to pick a member before the, for the San Luis County Cooch chain joint.
Okay, and that's next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, ten o'clock and cook.
Okay. Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Pavlik, second by Commissioner McBride, asking for myself to appoint somebody for next, for the meeting next Wednesday because Commissioner McBride has a conflict.
And Mr. Chair, if I could, I would add that whoever you appoint, it's critical that they be there because that's, that just makes our quorum and Brian and I have been working on, and Dale, we've been working on this for eight, nine years and we can't, we have to have a quorum there to act and get this moving.
Okay.
It's critical.
And if for some reason it can't, somebody can't make it, I will go.
Yeah, okay, I can make it myself.
And Mr. Chair, that is at the Cookland office, you know where it's at there?
Yep, right off the highway. Okay, all right. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
One more comment and that's that to keep this thing rolling, S E H, we don't have a contract with S E H right now. To keep it rolling, I might have to pull them in to help. I gotta do mailing to everybody and a few other things. If I do, I'll bring those bills to the board. I won't ship them out too much, but I'm gonna probably have to pull them in just to give you a heads up on that until we get a contract signed.
Mr. Chair, you got my email. They've gotten hold of me and wanted to know what our intentions were and I forwarded it to you.
Didn't see it unless I missed it somehow.
So, so maybe at some point, I guess, they're looking at, you know, their future too, what they're gonna be scheduled. So I think to that, I think the big thing was are we gonna have our own inspector? That was one of it.
Yeah, and I talked to, I did talk to Joe about that and I think if we have this extra funding, he agrees we need inspectors out there, you know, and he was trying to think of a way to eliminate some of the time and I didn't quite agree with that, so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna put together a, how much we spent so far, get that to Scott Harder, our financial guy, and figure out how much of this legacy money we need, where we stand if we can do that. We should have all that ready in the next week. But in the meantime, in the next week or so, I need S E H. I talked to Randy, said he'd be okay to pull them in by an hour base.
That was my question. We're tracking like these expenses now and those will be rolled into the, into the project costs. They won't be out of county dollars.
Right.
We're not, we're not done yet with the bonding bill. They haven't matured.
Right.
Got our fingers crossed here.
Dale, is it need for viewers over with or are they actually done or are they in the project?
Well, they're there if we have to call them back. I think on Jackfish Bay project, there was a court case that they had to get called back and...
We have to keep running for the entire project.
Yeah.
Stay required.
All right, thanks, Michael.
Thank you.
Sheriff, sheriff business.
I'm nervous when all three of them walk in. I see dollar signs.
No, we got John and then just me and Peter, eye candy, so.
Who is protecting the county? That's what I wanna know.
We have Mr. Nelson, I see. He can handle it for all of us.
Well, the ATV, I'd like to donate it to the Little Fork County service. They've been holding a pair here for the last couple of years if we ever had one. It was one that's, has been replaced essentially. It's sitting in storage, cannot be used. It's not in real great shape, but they don't seem to care. Need to tune up battery, where batteries charged, but I couldn't get it to start the other day, so just probably need to tune up. I believe it was even a seized ATV. I don't have any record of it in the filing cabinet that I inherited. It's, I don't, it's just not even on the books as far as I can tell, to be honest with you.
They have a snowmobile for like search and rescue operation, but they don't have the four wheelers. They've been asking for one for, and given, you know, in years past, like if we had seized a four wheeler and we didn't have given it back to the owner, then we could donate it, but we haven't had one. So we came across this one, well, if they want it, we'll give it to them. If they want to put some money into repairs, they can, they can do that.
Good idea.
Mr. Chair? They operate on such a thin margin. I mean, I think anything we could do to help, they do a great job.
We've done stuff like as far as, you know, donating, you know, used equipment like overhead lights, stuff like that, stuff that we're really very in need of.
I can, I sit on their ambulance yard and I can tell you they greatly appreciate everything we've done for them. I mean, they, it's amazing the services they've been able to provide and so, so little funding. I would gladly move on to that.
Got a motion by Commissioner Pavlik, second by Commissioner Skoye.
Recommendation of the sheriff, I said, do we need to make it clear? Do we need to sell it for a dollar?
Yeah, I was just gonna say it, it's all that.
I think we can donate.
I think it's another government, it's another government, yeah, it's other...
Put it this way, if we can't donate it, we had to pay a dollar, this county board is gonna be prosecuted for you. We've never messed with that.
There's pretty good resources, people down there, they'll get it running.
Yeah.
One of our former deputies quite likely maybe...
Okay, so just a donation and the four wheeler to the Little Fork ambulance, so. Any further discussion? Hearing that all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Approve employment separation of full-time E-911 corrections officer.
Yeah, one of my full-time corrections officers took a deputy position part-time right now in Pine County, so he's gonna be gone and, but he'd like to stay on as part-time till he gets squared away and I said, we can do that. And then as part of this, I would like to open up his position and hire one of my current part-time corrections, E-91 officers and officer, offer her the job.
Okay, so move one up then?
Yeah, move one up, yeah.
Okay.
I move, approve the separation.
Second, and then move one up to full-time?
I think it has to be two separate.
I think it does too.
Okay.
I think it says here it says notice, but I think we need, we need approval of that.
Okay.
First we need, yeah, and that's...
So first one to be the...
We're gonna approve the separation and then we're gonna approve hiring that full-time and then we're gonna notice the hire.
Okay.
That's and I'll remember the right order.
You have to sit here all day, we wouldn't kind of confuse you.
It's a typical day.
So I have a first from a crime.
And second by Pavlik.
We're good to roll.
Discussion. Hearing that all in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. Now to approve...
Filling that vacant position.
Filling the vacant position.
Yeah, and that's not on the agenda. So we're gonna approve filling the position. Right now.
Okay, which is the board?
Well, just as a matter of formality, I mean, if it's not on the agenda, we would, technically we have to add it.
Have to add it to the agenda first, okay.
Okay.
So I'll move on that.
Okay.
Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner Pavlik.
Just trying to keep the chairman out of trouble here.
Yeah, well, you guys are making it difficult today. Motion by Pavlik to add to the agenda, moving the part-time correction officer up to full-time.
Mr. Chair, actually, the motion is authorizing them to fill the vacant position.
Fill the vacant position, okay. I've got a motion by Pavlik, I have a second. Second by Commissioner Norby. Thank you. Discussion. Hearing that all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Now we can add that.
Now, now we can move the part-time officer up to full-time.
Actually, now that we just added it to the agenda that time, so now we actually have to make the motion to approve filling the vacant position. We just, the last one is to add it to the agenda.
And now you see why they brought all three of them. They're gonna dazzle.
I came down here thinking I knew what we were doing.
Motion by Commissioner McBride.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pavlik. Discussion. Hearing that all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
That's why the chairman gets paid all that extra money.
And now we're doing D3.
Which is what?
Noticing the hire of the full-time position.
Okay, and that's just a notice?
Yes, it is.
Okay, notice of hire, full-time E-91 officer and, and then next is a notice of hire of a part-time E-91 correction officer.
And Mr. Chair, just for some background, they don't need to authorize hiring a part-time, there's a blanket motion that allows them to have a certain number of part-time and so they don't need to go back to board to, in terms of filling those positions in a timely manner. So I think you can have a roster of what?
Six.
Six, okay, and then you can fill that roster, but you do need to do the notices of separation or, and then the notice of hire.
That happened one day when we were really weak and we thought, we knew we could trust Pete, you know?
All right. Thank you, guys.
You're welcome for the little practice.
The rules of government.
Robert's rules are helpful.
I think, think, Jennifer, if we get notice of hire, if we just cross notice out and put approved, we'd have it right there.
You know, Teresa said we needed to do that authorize it to fill the vacancy because if, and she gave me some background on it, in fact, there was a hiring freeze or if there was some budget concerns, then we might not in fact fill those full-time positions right away. Right, so you do need authorization to fill.
And once we have the authorization, then it's just a notice.
Correct.
Well, you guys are a lot nicer than everybody says you are. I say we're gonna want some money, Wayne.
Thanks, guys.
No motion required.
Just be like winning.
It'll be an easy one, huh?
Yeah. So just, just wanted...
Before you start, have you been, you've been following the plan and were you in here this morning?
No, I was not. I've just been picking up bits and pieces of it, so...
But you know Bob's on top and he went down to, you might wanna follow some of that. I mean, the bigger question is, is this gonna happen?
Right, right.
Thanks, Andy.
So just wanted to touch base and recap the results of our May 3rd timber auction that we had. We sold a little over 36,000 cords plus we sold a little over 51,000 Christmas tree top pieces. We had, we had offered those two decorative sail tops, tracks at the auction. They went unsold, but they were picked up the next day over the counter, so our total sold value at the auction was 1.178 million dollars, so.
Well, three, three of us did attend, well, four, no, Commissioner Skoye was there too. And some of the tracks were surprising, they were at appraised value and then other ones were very...
And if you look at our average prices overall, we've, we're, I mean, if you look at all species and a weighted average, we're right in there where we've been the last couple of years.
Get the grab.
Yep.
Nathan makes a good auction.
Yeah.
He does, huh?
I get, I get a little tongue tied.
Yeah, you do a really good job.
Gotta go to auctioneer's school.
Especially when you get three or four placards up.
Yeah.
Cause everybody wants to be sure they're included.
Yeah, go to an auction, I'll make funny faces or something.
That's the way we like to keep it moving along too, otherwise it can drag on and on and on.
It's arched, it really is.
But you sold an awful lot of timber within an hour or so.
Right.
Really, it works really well.
How many dozen cordages?
Just a hair over 36,000, so that's a really good offering for us.
Cause he fed him donuts first, he got him played out.
They were on the sugar eye.
So Nathan, when I first came out, was that a 10-year plan we had? And now we're getting, what, we'll start looking?
Through 2019.
Through 2019, that's what I was good for. So we're at the bottom end of, I mean, we're kind of going down a little bit on our harvest levels?
We are, actually, our harvest levels, we, like, for instance, this sale, I mean, we're really, you know, our Aspen is pretty, you know, we're right on track with our Aspen harvest, but some of these other cover types that are, that have been kind of hard to come up with the acres like Tamrac and Balsam Fur, we're, we're really, we're trying to have the guys hone in on trying to find those acres, so.
And one of the comments that I know Wayne has had and I've had is from soda lagers, they continue to struggle with balsam. Are they finding markets for that?
Hey, no, there are, there are markets. They're not great markets, but there are markets for it and I think, you know, the short, the short winter season that we had, the early breakup, you know, the rain that we had in February, it kind of forced a couple of the, I would say, the mills that primarily use spruce to look at balsam as a kind of a substitute for that spruce, so.
What's the problem with balsam? Does it break up when it's, when it's, when departed?
Yeah, so each mill kind of has a different, they have a different pulping process. Some are mechanically pulped, some mills like this one, they use chemicals, but you know, it's a number of different things. It's, it's if it dries out, you know, and you chip it, it just explodes. Some, some mills, it's, it's a pitch issue on the machines itself because balsam has a higher pitch content than spruce, so they get a, they get a buildup on the paper machines, so.
But I know that, right?
It's not a good day.
And shortly after we completed the other inventory or study, you know, the balsam market, it was looked at at the time when we did that, that that would be a big market, but it was shortly after that when the first mill went down and, you know, it really changed the, the amount of balsam being consumed. And so I know the last couple of years I was lobbying that I went from, I went from pursuing balsam to avoiding it, so. And if you can get rid of it, it's at a low price too.
But our, our overall, you know, we kind of, the counties that have a timber sale program, we kind of all kind of combine our numbers and look at where we were at. We look, we just rolled up 2016 and our cooch's offering was, I mean, we're the second highest offering county. We have the third highest land base, so only San Luis County offered more cords than we did in 2016, so, you know, I know that's always, that's always, the question is we need more wood and we're selling it, so.
And then, can Mr. Chair, last week, you see that Louisiana Pacific has backed off the Cook plant and they've backed off the White Lakes siding plant. Is that kind of where that goes out?
So originally, White Lakes was, was gonna be a brand new greenfield proposal. They then switched, they purchased the old Anesworth plant, Cook, so they kind of took White Lakes off the plate completely and they were focused, if they did do anything, it would be a Cook, which would be a brownfield, what they consider a brownfield mill, because it's kind of already, the infrastructure's kind of already in place. What they announced a couple of weeks ago is, you know, they kind of leapfrogged the Cook project and want to go back with the project in British Columbia. They still, Cook is still on the plate, I would say, but it's, it's out there a few years and, you know, this, this British Columbia plant was nowhere to be heard six months ago and all this, so I guess the bottom line is a lot, a lot can change in a, in even six months' time, so.
Commissioner? Adequate, affordable timber supply, that rings in my ear. That's the, that's the CEO of PCA, that's what he needs to be here. So even if that project were to move forward, even in several years, what we need is an expansion of the timber supply then because otherwise you know what's gonna happen. There's no competition for available wood.
Right, and that's...
Prices are gonna go right through the roof.
And that's a concern is these, that type of a mill with, you know, when it's, it's not, it's likely not gonna use the balsam and some of these other species. It's gonna put the pressure on the Aspen, so.
Absolutely, so that's, and that's something we need to watch because we can't afford to lose these.
But just, you know, the age of the forest throughout the county, I, I think a lot of the forest closer to the mill is starting to mature. Doesn't seem like so, some, some of our cuts and Mopus and state cuts are actually getting closer to the mill, which is an advantage for transportation for them.
Yeah, we're getting back on that. You know, we're on that cycle of how it was cut to last night and it was, you know, 40, 50 years ago, they were cutting heavy in the, you know, 30 miles out. So we're kind of starting to come back into that again.
And the other thing that's missing is, is the federal supply of available timber.
Absolutely.
They're, they're, they're sitting on it and it doesn't know any good, it's not even good forest management.
Right, right.
We, we have these debates, I don't understand where they're coming from.
So in just, to that point, there was a big article, in fact, in the little paper a few weeks ago, about a month ago. So, and just to that point, there was a big article, in fact, in the local paper a few weeks ago, about a month ago now, but, I mean, moose, the decline of the moose population is a big deal right now, and now a lot of the wildlife managers are really, I mean, it's not just one factor, it's a number of factors that they attribute to the decline of the moose population, but a big one is, is the, is just what you said, the Superior National Forest is not cutting as much timber as they once were, and what they do cut, it's not the type of cuts that is conducive to good quality moose habitat. So they're, in fact, they've got a big project proposal right now up on the North Shore, where they're gonna, they're gonna do a lot of, they're gonna treat a lot of acres with, you know, they, they want to do some prescribed burns, but they also want to do some big, big cuts, which is conducive to moose habitat, moose like big, young forests, I guess, so.
Listen, Chair.
Two weeks ago, I was up on 502, I'm seeing Arrow's Road trout fishing. And they're in there fifty, sixty, seventy kilometers now, and the wood is coming out there by the thousands of cords.
Yep.
Where, do we know where that wood is going? Is it going to Thunder Bay or...
A lot of it, a lot of it from there could, it could either go to Dryden, to the pulp mill in Dryden, or, or, I would say a lot of it is, the softwood anyways, ending up, they've got Resolute's got a sawmill at Atticoke, and they've got a sawmill in Thunder Bay, and they've got a big pulp mill in Thunder Bay as well.
Is there that much coming across the bridge?
No. They, they can't, they can't bring wood off of crown land over to this side, basically. So the only wood that can come from, from Canada over here is wood off of crown land.
Right.
Sapaui, is there anything there?
That's, that's basically, that's the Resolute sawmill that I referenced, at Atticoke, and I think that's at the old Sapaui's.
Let me tell you, these people that he was with on the 502 road, it's a miracle he made it.
Well, they recommend if you're on, if you're on the Cedar North Road, that you have a radio with you, and you keep talking what, what kilometer you're at, because these trucks are coming with a hundred and fifty thousand pound boats.
Yeah.
Unbelievable, and it's...
It wasn't that, though. He went fishing with my brother and his brother. When he made it back, I was happy.
And actually, back to Wade's statement with the Forest Service, and the Chip law is actually cutting lower and more in Superior. I don't even know if the, if the industry takes in, takes the Superior National Forest into account as the timber resource. I don't even think they factor them in, but from talking to some of the operators that are working in the, in the chip now, they're, they're going and they're cutting acres, but they are cutting all the poor acres to make sure that your acreage is up. And they're complaining, they're saying, we're, we're running over the woods to cut an acre here, or two acres there, it's just garbage. And what it is, is that they're just, they're, they're not conducive to selling wood. They don't want to sell wood.
Right.
So that's, that's really affecting it.
Well, in our, our quarter adjustment taxes or whatever on the horizon are causing spikes of wood prices, you know, for us in the United States.
There's some local producers that sell all their wood out of state or to a different, you know, different county or different state. Do we, what species of wood is that? Is that all balsam anymore?
Well, there's actually wood from, from Cooch County on multiple ownerships, not only the land that we manage, but, I mean, we have, we see wood obviously going here to this facility, but we see wood going to Potlatch Mill in Bemidji, we see it going to Grand Rapids, we see it going into Wisconsin, to Superior, Wisconsin, and then it gets put on rail and goes further into central Wisconsin.
Is that aspen too, or...
That, it's primarily softwood, spruce and balsam, but it, it can be some aspen too, yep. It's, you know, it's, it's, the wood market is not as confined as it once was, I guess.
A lot of the Wisconsin market, I want to have a scan, but I don't, don't use much scan.
Yeah, they, they don't use much anymore.
Well, I enjoy, I enjoy the auctions that they're always... It's an opportunity to talk to the loggers and that too.
Yeah, it's a good day.
When is, when is the next one, though? August, August 2nd.
Oh, we send, send round the one and out.
Taking good donations now.
It's the first Wednesday in August, I think it's the second.
I went to an auction, I went to an auction with Doug Grindel out at the Herm, where he had all his equipment lined up, and he was having trouble getting bids, so I thought, you know, help him out, so I throw out a bid on a, on a Chevy Suburban or something, just to, you know, to get it going. No one else bid, and I, and Carol was so upset, mentioned she wouldn't let me go to auctions anymore. Fortunately for me, the darn thing had been confiscated at the customs, and after six months, I couldn't get a title, so they released me.
Oh.
Remember that, dear? She was very upset, not happy. I thought it was kind of, it kind of looked like the Munster Mobile. So I told Grindel, you're on your own from now on, I'm a...
I was just asking, what have you heard about the power plant over there? They quit taking wood. Is, is that permanent, or is, are they gonna stage it off, or do they know some loggers that just purchased a lot of engineering?
There was, there was some language in the omnibus, uh, Energy and Jobs Bill, kind of ironic, but essentially what, what Commissioner Skoye is referring to is Laurentian Energy and Virginian Hitting and then Benson Power down in Benson, Minnesota, they're huge consumers of biomass. So they buy essentially wood chips and grindings, and then they burn it to generate power, then they sell it to Excel Energy, and this was part of an agreement about ten years ago that was reached, that Excel Energy wanted to get additional permitting to store nuclear waste at a couple of their nuclear facilities. So the, the state said that's fine, but you're gonna, we want you to, they essentially, you know, put X amount of renewable energy, i.e. biomass, generated energy on the market, so now Excel Energy wants out of that deal, and it's still got like nine years left in its life. They've had some success down at the capital to get some language inserted, and what it essentially will do is it'll put biomass producers in this part of the state and those that supply the Benson facility, it'll essentially put them out of business. So.
Not good.
So I don't, I don't know where that language finally, I know they were talking about removing it for, for this year, but they were pretty sure that they were gonna get it through, if not this year, next year, so.
Cause I, I was, there was a couple, a couple of loggers I know that just, they just invested a lot of money in it. But like they said, is that they convert natural gas so much cheaper.
Right.
That the, they can't be in the market with electricity.
It's hard to plan long-term for anyone, including counties, because of the, it changes so much with energy prices. You're absolutely right, that's the reason why, cheap energy. Hopefully it stays cheap. It's gonna, that hurts other people here. All right, you know what helps our constituents?
Thank you for that report, Major. Thank you. Is there anything else to come before the board?
Just a...
Nathan's brave, he comes here all by himself, doesn't he?
Jen, you say you, you find out who wants, who's gonna attend and then...
Yeah, we would like to go to that. I can have, make reservations for your rooms for that District 1 AMC conference. It's, it would be for Wednesday evening, which is...
Twenty-first.
The, what's the date on that?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-first, does the meeting's on the twenty-second?
Yep.
At Black Bear.
Yep. So, I'll make my own reservation.
You'll make your own?
Register.
You don't need to register, you just go to the meeting, and then you, they'll, they'll bill us for those, that attendance, thirty-five dollars.
I will tip you.
You want, okay, I'll do one for, for you, um, for sure, provide?
I'll go and adjourn.
Okay.
Well, check and see, I just, it's the first I've heard of water.
Okay, I think I gave you some information on that in some of your notes this morning, so you've got that there.
That, that will be my last meeting as district chairperson, so.
You've signed out.
Yep.
Now is Rich tied out, or can he move to... Well, he's running for senate, vice president.
He's, he's gonna, he's gonna run for the chairperson of the district though?
Oh, yes, he is?
Yep, cause it's a, it's a better move to go from...
So he can hold both positions?
Nope, nope. When he moves, then whoever is...
Vice chair.
Vice chair will move on.
How many years were you?
Six.
You know, Dennis Spinks still matters.
Yeah.
But can you, can you move to the, to another position then? How's this work?
Possibility, you know, I'm...
You have to let, you know, you let us know what you wanna do, and we'll, we'll make sure you're...
Yeah, well, well, as far as, you know, as far as the district part goes, I, I can't do anything else. But, you know, with, with the, with the programs, you know, general government, or, or natural resources, or helping human services, whatever, if I get into one of those positions as chairperson, then I could stay on the AM, chairperson or vice chair of, of that program, then, you know, I'd still be on the AMC board. But that part I probably, probably won't happen, so.
Well, you keep, I suppose, Rich will move on by the same.
Yep.
He, he does a good job.
And Annie might be interested in...
What's that?
That Annie's possibly interested in the vice chair?
Yeah, Annie is...
She'd be good.
Yeah, I talked to her last week at...
Doesn't, doesn't hurt that she's an attorney.
And, yeah, exactly. Exactly, so.
She'll be good at whatever she does.
Yeah, but, but yeah, she's got an interest in, in being vice chair and...
Well, I'd just like to keep you involved on our behalf on some of this stuff, because you've been a conduit.
Yep.
You've been a lightning rod.
Yeah.
What's that?
Been more of a lightning rod than a conduit.
Yeah, yeah.
And he manages to make it to the meetings, even with the trains.
Yeah. But I...
It'll be the day before though, you know, so.
But, but no, it's, it's been good.
Well, you did, you did, you did a good job representing us, Kevin, and I appreciate that, so.
So.
It's a lot of work.
Well, I thank you guys for your, your support, so.
Do you want a question to adjourn?
I do.
I want to adjourn.
Okay, I'm watching by Commissioner Norby to adjourn, second by Commissioner Skoye. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.